Good evening. This is the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, January 16th, 2024. And I'll call this meeting to order. Tonight, we have Pastor Craig Massey of Hope Reformed Church.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. And council? Megan, too. I'm glad to be here before you and pleased to see all of you here, especially those of you who have newly earned the right to serve here by winning the trust of the people of South Haven in the last election. Congratulations. But along with the honor of leadership come the duties of humility, integrity, and service. So let's be in prayer for these for just a moment. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the life of your son, the birth of whom our community celebrates during these days. We thank you also for the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help this body to act with character and conviction. Guide them to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help them to speak with charity and restraint. Give all of us a spirit of service. Remind us frequently that we are all stewards of your authority. Guide this council to be the leaders of your people's needs. Help them see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree and treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the consideration your creation deserves. And finally, Lord, renew us with the strength of your presence and instill in these, in this body, the joy of helping to build a community worthy of your creation. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Please stand, if you can, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, please.
Jeff Arnold.
Here.
Mary Hasley.
Here.
Wendy Onuki.
Here.
Joe Reiser.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Letitia Wilkins.
Here.
Annie Brown.
Here.
And tonight, we have South Haven Public Schools Superintendent Kevin Schooly to provide an update about the operating millage renewal. Great to see you here.
Thank you. Appreciate you giving me the time. And, you know, congratulations to all of you. And as a 30-year citizen in South Haven, I appreciate your service. It does take a lot of work, and we do appreciate it. With that, and I apologize for some of my attire. I've been doing a couple of things on the roads lately, as some of you know. I'm just here to inform you that, pardon me, South Haven Schools has an operating millage renewal, and that's coming up on February 27th, so next month. And from time to time, I get questions, like, okay, you know, the first one is, what is that? So what that is, Michigan passed Proposal A in 1994, and it changed the model of school funding. And it was based on local property taxes, and now it's based on a state income tax, or state sales tax. Excuse me. A state sales tax and education tax on non-homestead properties. So non-homestead properties are not your primary residence, okay? They're businesses, investment properties, and second homes. So under Proposal A, schools are required to levy 18 mills. Excuse me, I don't know.
Water, if you want water. I didn't use mine.
Yeah.
Nope.
So like I said, schools are required to levy 18 mills. And for South Haven, that's about $11.9 million in revenue. A couple of other questions I get are, why are you asking for a renewal? Well, it's the simple answer is, it expires at the end of 2024, and we have to. And another question that we received is, while on the ballot, it reads, we're asking for 19.6692 in operating millage. So the reason for that is due to what's called the Headley rollback. That takes place when the district's tax base grows more than the rate of inflation. So I was also asked, gosh, for Mayor Brown, could I address some questions for you? So I'll do my best to do that. So one of the questions was, what amounts are received from each jurisdiction within the district boundaries? So I can give that to you. So for the 2324 school year, and according to, this is from our state aid payment, the city of South Haven, which resides within Van Buren County, is 6.4 million. South Haven Township, 1.5. Casco, 2.7, almost 2.8. Geneva Township, 521,000. The city of South Haven, that lies in Alligan County, not in Van Buren, is 55, or I'm sorry, 49,500. So that is quite a bit of revenue that we receive. I do have the previous three years of data. I don't know if you want me to read that to you, or what I could do is send it to Ms. Hosier, and she could distribute it to the council members.
That would be great. Thank you.
Also, there was a question, does the school receive the entire 18 mills? Yes, we receive the entire 18 mills. And then there was a question about our foundation allowance. Our foundation allowance currently is $9,608. And that was an increase from 2223. And I think that there was a question about, you know, how much of that foundation allowance goes, is from the Michigan Department of Ed versus how much is from the generation of the non-homestead renewal money? So I can give you that number in totals. So MDE per the year will contribute $5,095,338. The non-homestead is $11,909,602. So, you know, it's about 48%, 49% of the overall operating budget. Now, also in the pamphlet, and there's some pamphlets here for folks, if they, if folks in the community would like some, you could also go to our website and take a look there. So, but in the pamphlet, and I want to say it's on page three, there was a graphic, and it talked about different revenue sources of the district. And two of those revenue sources, I was asked to comment on. There's a revenue source called other state revenue. And what that is, that's a MIPSER retirement at 3.7 million. That's at-risk funding and grants at 1.2. And it's special education funding at 400,000. And then there's some smaller grants that are in there as well. I would mention that the MIPSERS retirement is both a revenue and expenditure. It comes in, it goes out. The other question was, what was the other revenues mentioned? So that, and it's a lesser amount, but that's ISD, money that we receive from the intermediate school district, investment earnings, food service costs, transfers, athletic and rental fees, private donations, and Medicare service reimbursement. The last question I received, excuse me, is any of the millage diverted to the DDA, BRA, LFA? No, it is not. It entirely goes to the school. I encourage you to visit our website. It's shps.org, and there's a link to not only this packet, but a frequently asked question section that I think is very helpful. And really, if folks need a more detailed answer, they can always feel free to call the office, Nancy or I will do what we can to find out the answers for you. So in a nutshell, I think that's what it is.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Schooly, for this February 27th vote, if you vote yes, you're not adding to your taxes, you're just continuing your taxes. Is that the safe way to put it?
Yes, for non-homestead properties, primary residents are not impacted.
So yes votes, not more taxes, just continue to pay the same.
It's a renewal, yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
All right. I have to go make some decisions that'll impact at least three of you.
Is there, next we come to the approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda with an amendment to item nine under Old Business. I would like the amendment to be, instead of Mary Hosely, I would like it to be George Sleeper.
I second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, motion passes.
No.
Roll call.
Okay, roll call.
Okay. Arnold?
Yes.
Hosely, or Hosely, I'm sorry.
No.
Onuki?
No.
Reiser?
No.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
No.
And Brown?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Thank you.
I make a, it failed.
Yes, motion failed.
I would like to move to approve the agenda as written.
I second. Any discussion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
Thank you. The agenda's approved. It's now time for public comment items on the agenda excluding items scheduled for public hearing. So these are comments for items that are on the agenda before you.
I'm Bob Sherman, 250 North Shore Drive. And I appear this evening as a year-round resident of South Haven, a current member of the Planning Commission. I've also served on the Parks Commission, and I've served on the Local Officers Compensation Committee for the past several years. Specifically, I want to speak to your action at the meeting of January 2nd regarding the appointment to the Planning Commission for 2024 and tonight's agenda item number nine, approving the council's ex-official member of the Planning Commission. And although Mayor Brown had recommended that Mr. Sleeper be reappointed to that role, I certainly acknowledge the council's right to affirm or deny that recommendation. All that said, however, I believe your action to not reappoint George Sleeper was disrespectful of him and shameful on your part. The action appeared, in my opinion, to be well-planned and carefully rehearsed. It totally devalued his contributions to that body over many years. And I can tell you that George is universally respected and held in the highest regard by current members of the Planning Commission, and his contributions are greatly valued. In light of the aggressive schedule for the Planning Commission in 2024, his absence would be a significant loss. I strongly urge that you reconsider that action and, this evening, that you reappoint George to the Planning Commission. Thanks.
Good evening.
Good evening. Amy Nichols, 541 Woodbridge Circle. If my cane falls over, I'm sorry. My purpose here tonight is to express my deep displeasure on the behavior of four council members at the meeting on January 2nd for the resolution to appoint Councilperson Hosely to Planning Commission. Councilmembers Reiser, Onuki, Wilkins, and Hosely should very well be ashamed of themselves for their treatment of Councilperson George Sleeper. The resolution you pushed through without notice blindsided a colleague, embarrassed him in public, and very possibly violated the Open Meetings Act with your possible collusion in this matter. Your behavior in this matter was unprofessional and deplorable. George Sleeper has lived in this city for 30-plus years, raised his family here, given back to the city in numerous council seats, boards, and committees. In fact, too many to count, honestly. He is an educated, respected, knowledgeable leader that deserves to retain his seat. He does not deserve the treatment you gave him. I am also truly saddened to see other members of a city board treat one of your own that way. It's embarrassing. As a member of Planning Commission, I can tell you that would not fly with us. We are a team. We don't always agree. That I think you know. But we would not ever take that kind of treatment of one of our own. Furthermore, if Councilperson Hosely is appointed to Planning Commission, I fear I may not be able to say that, given your behavior as of January 2nd. I fear that your presence may be subject, the Planning Commission, to be forced to have an attorney at every meeting. Councilperson Hosely ran on being fiscally responsible, but I fear that was just another campaign slogan, as we are going to be required to have an attorney every time you're at a meeting. In the words of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., "The time is always right to do the right thing." You, as a council, have a chance to undo the egregious actions of January 2nd and do the right thing by putting George Sleeper back on Planning Commission where he belongs. Change the resolution to say George Sleeper. If you cannot make that happen, then I think you all need to consider resigning in your behavior in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Nancy Nat, 125 Elkenberg. Before I start, I would like to welcome Annie Brown as our new mayor and Mary as our new city councilperson. I'm here tonight to talk about this, again, the Planning Commission appointment of Mary Hosely, and I broke it down to three different areas: the facts, governance, and character assassination. The facts. Mary read the city council selection of a PC member, and in her ordinance, it required to have a city council vote and a resolution. She sent emails to Kate and to every one of you, including the mayor, on this matter. Kate followed up with an opinion from our city attorney. The city attorney found that the procedure had been handled incorrectly for a number of years, for whatever reason. No one should have been blindsided by this if they read the emails. It was not done behind closed doors. There is no coup. It is stated clearly in our city ordinance and was shared with the aforementioned people before the city council meeting two weeks ago. Governance. It is called democracy regardless of how people feel and whose feelings may or may not be hurt. Mary was voted in by city council. The resolution will be completed, and things will be done correctly for the first time in 20 years. End of story. Character assassination. This goes to the members of the Planning Commission who supported Clark Gruber's motion. The opinions I've heard tonight and those that I heard at the Planning Commission lack due diligence of fact. The attempt by Clark Gruber was merely a sophomoric attack to block governance of our city and, by some, to undermine the character of Mary Hosely. Mary was legitimately selected and will be serving on the Planning Commission. She is more than qualified than most who serve on this committee, and she should be treated with respect. Time served on a commission does not make one an expert. Mary, who has been on council for a short time, has uncovered a 20-year-old oversight. That, in and of itself, makes her more qualified to serve than most on the Planning Commission. In my opinion, people who attempt to block enforcement of our ordinances should be removed from the seats they hold. Thank you.
Hello. Lisa Groupiers, 561 Indiana. The residents won the election. We have worked hard and waited for this era of South Haven history for a long time. The votes were cast, and the elected city council representatives were chosen by the residents. We residents want to have a voice in the conversation, to be listened to and to be heard. That momentum began at the last city council meeting, when it was put forth that Mary Hosely was the choice to be the ex-official councilperson on Planning Commission, and city council majority voted in favor of this. We want Mary Hosely on Planning Commission because she has been investigating and researching Planning Commission issues for a couple of years now for the benefit of the city and for us residents. She is on our side. She is willing to do the hard work and tedious research of delving into city ordinances and regulations to determine what the guidelines are on any number of issues. And when she finds out answers, she then follows up with us and tells us what she has discovered, providing documentation from our own ordinances. I wasn't always a fan of Mary Hosely. In fact, I was one of those types city staff and candidates have asked us to be, to put my trust in city staff and those who allegedly work on behalf of our city. I did this when the Overton project was going to be put into action. I questioned who Mary Hosely was, newly arrived to our community and turning this project upside down. I truly was sided with the city to see this through for the benefit of creating for affordable housing here at South Haven, though I've lost sight of what that even is anymore. It wasn't until after this project was put on hold that I learned the city had added in some units of subsidized housing in order to qualify for additional funding, while at the same time telling us Overton was not subsidized housing. Our Housing Commission Director had said that what is needed here is next-level housing for those who graduate out of subsidized housing so they can continue to live here. This is what is missing, plus workforce housing for our summer workers. This is what I thought Overton would be. I won't even get into the contamination of the Overton property and who or what that was going to be or who or what that was going to be or not be remediated. The city seemed to just want to push this through at any cost. Mary was the one who set me straight. Mary and I still didn't agree on everything, and many residents were with Mary on these same topics of disagreement. Mary literally got us all organized and informed us about this project without regard to which side we were on. Once I got to know Mary better, I reached out to her on anything that was questionable or seemed downright wrong regarding the many construction projects around South Haven. Many of us residents reached out to Mary as well. Mary is smart, patient, willing to investigate, and pore through the city ordinances to discover regulations that apply to the situations we inquire about, more so than anybody else at the city. What has become more clear to me and many others is that our city staff devoted to building construction compliance is small and apparently not as experienced as we need to manage the amount of construction taking place in our city. City staff must be collaborative with the Planning Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals in order to have consistency and compliance amongst all angles of the building processes here at South Haven. Mary Hosely, as the ex-official councilperson to Planning Commission, provides fresh eyes and perspectives on Planning Commission issues and matters. Whatever experience and expertise Councilperson Sleeper brought to Planning Commission will be matched and exceeded by Councilperson Mary Hosely's areas of expertise, professional background, and willingness to pursue every detail in our ordinances. Planning Commission does not have a right to make a recommendation to city council, South Haven's ultimate governing authority. Thank you to Planning Commissioners Nies and Varney for speaking to this as the matter unfolded at the last Planning Commission meeting, especially since this motion was brought by Planning Commissioner Clark Gruber, who is stepfather to Griffin Graham, South Haven's assistant city manager. Nepotism and its influence should not be an issue that is part of our city's decision-making. All of us residents rely on our city to make objective decisions in the best interest of all who work and live here. We residents voted, and effective city council resulted, and we want what we voted for. If our majority city council determines Mary Hosely should be appointed councilperson to the Planning Commission, this is what we residents support, to be the final decision as well.
Your time is up.
Dan Agnello, 964 Everett Parkway. I agree with what Lisa said, and I think Mr. Sleeper, or Reiser, said that we shouldn't be attacking people, we should be nice. And already, we've already started the first, second meeting of the year attacking people. George has done a great job on Planning Commission. No, no questions asked, okay? But it's time for the change, you know? Elections have consequences. Mary was voted in, she was nominated, and it clearly states, even a dumb engineer like me can figure it out, that you cannot appoint a member, ex-official member, from the city council, the Planning Commission, by consent agenda. You have to go through resolution. And Mary found that out. But like Lisa said, it's been happening incorrectly for the past, I don't know how many years. But Mary, like Lisa said, Mary is more than qualified. Mary is a lawyer. You already have a lawyer on your Planning Commission and on your city council. So the lawyer in need is right there, okay? Mary analyzes everything backward and forward. We don't always agree on things, and she researches everything. She knows, she knows the codes better than I do, and I look at them a lot, especially with regard to STR. So, and she can take the planning course, I'm sure the city will pay for her planning course, just like she did for George. George took the course. And you guys need to support Mary. We need a change. We have a resident-centrist council, and we need a resident-centrist person on the Planning Commission. Planning Commission has been doing, has done some great things, I've been to a lot of the meetings, but I watched the meeting from last time where the nomination was made, or the comment was made, recommendation was made for Mr. Sleeper. There is nothing, again, I'll state it again, like other people said, there is nothing in the ordinance that says planning has that power. And like, I believe it's Mike Nies and some other members said, we can individually go up and speak at today's meeting, we can send emails, we can call the mayor, we can call anybody, but we do not have the right to make a recommendation that's voted on by the Planning Commission. Go look in the, go look in the ordinance. There is nothing in there that says that. That's not their power. They do the city plan, okay? The master plan says right in there, and they do anything that has to do with planning, with zoning, with planning. That is their job, and that's it. So we need, we need to pass the resolution to elect Mary. My second amendment would be on STR, okay? The STR report's kind of devoted on today, and hopefully, we won't have to worry about the STR report as far as a calculation. I think the consensus was, when Kate was asking the opinions of the council, that we need a cap. And a cap has to be set, and the cap should be set to include all the exemptions that are in there. You know, the cap, the nobody finally come up with should include that and maybe possibly personal STRs. And part of that discussion, other of her points, talking points, was personal STRs. Personal STRs should be only available to residents. Now, the December 4th city council meeting notes said, well, it was a markup of the ordinances that anybody that has a PRE would be qualified, you know, to do that. Well, as we've seen many times, there's some people that own five or six houses, and somehow they're able to declare PREs for every one of them. That's because the properties are in different names, LLCs, husbands and wives, and that kind of thing. So.
One minute.
Thank you. The bottom line is, I was, first of all, I want to thank Annie for reaching out to me about, with regard to STRs. I really appreciate that. out to me about, with regard to STRs. I really appreciate that. But we need to work on, I will apologize, first of all, when I sent out that email, I didn't realize that the marked up recodification for the Code of Ordinance and 1743, 44, and 45 were in a December 4th packet. And there's a lot of good things that they did, the recodification did in there. There's a lot of things that we have to change. My recommendation would be, and before you even have your priority meeting, is to get together with a bunch of people, sit down for three or four hours, hash out a new one if we have to go new or modify the existing one, mark it up, sit on it for a week, come back, do it again, and then present something to Planning. We cannot sit.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Lisa Beck, 879 Monroe Boulevard. First, I too would like to congratulate the people that were elected and reelected. I'm here to speak on behalf of Mary Hosley in favor for several reasons. But first of all, first one is a personal experience that I am sure that most on the city council are familiar with right now. So I won't go into great detail, but there was a question of an ordinance about a building that's going up near us. And I was told on several occasions, after way too many emails, that there was no ordinance that covered that. Mary found not one, but two ordinances that clearly cover it, and I really appreciated that. I have not really appreciated the response I've gotten from someone in city council. I did hear from Jeff and Wendy, and I appreciate that. But the point is not that issue because there's plenty of emails about it. The issue is Mary was the one that found the ordinance within a day and a half. I think that she is extremely talented. I think she's smart. I think she was voted in despite not being from South Haven and not having the backing of long term because of that. I think that's what the voters want. I think that's what the residents want. Someone on Facebook posted about, you know, she's not as familiar with the way things are done. I think that that's the reason she was voted in, is we need some fresh ideas. We need some fresh blood. We all know Mary's attention to detail. And like others have said much more eloquently than I can, we don't always agree. But I think a lot of us do trust that Mary will try to do the right thing. She will listen. She'll have an open mind. And I do not believe that every time she comes, we're going to need to hire a lawyer. I think that that was kind of a low shot. I'm not as familiar with you, Mr. Sleeper, but I'm sure you've done a great job on the Planning Commission. I've heard wonderful things about you. But I think we need to follow the rules. And I think Mary was, there's a resolution for her. It hasn't been done right. It is a new time in South Haven's life, so to speak. And I think that we should follow through on what we started and have Mary voted in. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Larsdorff for 23 Delaware. I'd also like to address item nine. It's really a procedural issue. The reason why we have terms, whether it be Planning Commission or Zoning Board of Appeals, is so when that term ends, a new person might be appointed. There's no right to a reappointment. The whole point is to have participatory democracy. And for the council, you want to have different people on these commissions. I would hope over the years that all of the commission members would get a chance to serve on the Planning Commission or Zoning Board of Appeals. That's the whole point, is to get a variety of people on there. But there's no right to reappointment. And I'm very happy with the service that Mr. Sleeper has given to the Planning Commission with his expertise. It's not going to go to waste. When you have items come up now for Planning Commission, you have someone with expertise, you have a new member. This all enriches the council in how they approach things. So this is a procedural thing. A term is ended, no one has a right to reappointment, and now we have a resolution to appoint somebody else on there. And frankly, I was surprised that somebody made a motion to substitute because that's not part of Roberts. When you have a resolution in front of you, you've got to vote that in first, and if that fails, then you can do a new one. But you typically, when you have something in front of you, you don't have something else trying to get in front of it. Anyway, I hope the council will do the right thing, and I hope over the years, all of you will get a chance to serve on the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda Schubel, 125 Van Buren. I'm coming at this from a personal standpoint. I've known Mary since the 90s. What you see is what you get. She is honest. She is hardworking. She is loyal. She is true. She has no hidden agenda. She's a retired attorney. She could be sitting back on her laurels and enjoying the good life. She cares about South Haven. Genuinely, deep in her heart, she only wants what's fair for you to be fair for you. That's all she wants, fair across the board, not special treatment for special people. Mary should be on the Planning Commission. She's, no offense to you, Mr. Sleeper. I think new eyes are a great thing. She'll come at it with a fresh perspective. I think we should do the right thing. Thanks.
Thank you, Linda.
Clark Gruber, 305 Erie Street. I guess I'm the second most popular person here tonight. And I'm proud stepfather of Griffin Graham. I spent 12 years on council and almost as many years on planning as well. I know this is a very, very hard spot to be and to be able to make decisions. Coming at it from the Planning Commission perspective, I think George is the best tool. I didn't take anything away from Mary when talking about her. I just looking at who would be the best tool to put your direction forward, and we have to remember that. If you want a new direction, it comes from city council. Planning Commission will not create any direction. They will listen to your counsel. They will take the information you've provided them and say, look, this is what we want you to work on, Planning Commission. And when I look at that group, and when I look at the best tool we possibly have at the moment, it's George. What may happen two years from now, as individuals get additional experience, I know what that's like. When we talk about committees and boards, I was on the Airport Authority. I was on the Harbor Commission. I was on the Liberty Hard Bailey Board, and also Planning. So, you know, I had the opportunity to be on more than one board. And I know when I started, I had to take some time, learn where I needed to be, and use that focus. Now, one of the hardest things I've had to do when I was sitting on council was when I had something in front of me, and I wanted to say yes, and other individuals wanted to say no. And I started hearing from my constituents. And my first big vote on council was with the Wolf Restaurant, and they wanted to put a restaurant down on the South Beach. And I thought that was a great idea. However, I got an outpouring of my constituents who said, no, we don't want to make that happen. So what did I vote? And what did I do? I voted against where I wanted to, and I went with my constituents. So if you've got an outpouring of individual, of your constituents that you've heard of that have given you some direction, I had to go with that. And I know that tonight there was a petition that was put together of over 50 names of individuals who feel like George would be the right individual for Planning Commission. So you have an opportunity in front of you to take a motion, which was properly created. Once that motion is in, you then amend the motion, put George Sleeper on that, vote on that amendment to the motion, and then vote on the motion. So, good luck with your decision making tonight. It's not easy. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Pat Gaston, 97th Superior Street. I guess the whole thing here is, I'm going to go back to something. Several years ago, we always used to have term limits, and this is not just George, it's just all of the commissions. We had term limits, but unfortunately, we couldn't find enough people to fill all those positions. So we had to vote, and we got rid of term limits. I guess my problem now is I see people staying on, and this is not just about George and Mary, on these commissions, like Supreme Court justices or something. People are, it used to be that we didn't have enough people that were willing to serve. We have people willing to serve, but people stay on there, and so they're reappointed, and so that person never gets to serve. I would just like to suggest, and this is not just about George, I would like to suggest that when a term ends, and when city staff calls the person and says, would you like to reapply, that they say to those people, by the way, there are other people willing to serve. And when somebody takes up the option to reaffirm that they want another, for them to ask, are there other people willing to serve? I guess we're fortunate that we have more than one person willing to serve on this board. And again, this is nothing about Mr. Sleeper or Ms. Hosley. It's, the council wants to do something else, and that's their job. It's not Planning Commission's job to tell them what to do. As Mr. Gruber said, it's city commission's job to tell Planning. So I too have dealt with Ms. Hosley. I think she'll be fine. It's just time to move on. And again, I hope, my other thing about these commissions, that somebody takes that into consideration. When you say, oh, I want another term, it'd be nice if you would say, gee, there's other people. We've got new people coming into our community all the time that want to serve, but they can't because the other people are reappointed over and over. You know, Mr. Gruber was saying he's been on planning for years. I mean, I don't think people should be on planning for years. You know, a term, two terms, that's okay. This is time to move on.
Thank you. Thank you, Pat.
Good evening. I'm Grace Borgfield at 302 Michigan Avenue, and I'm here to speak on item number 11. Do you have any questions from me on item number 11 to the council? You should know all about it. It's been a two-year journey for me. So, is there any questions?
Do you want to give a brief synopsis?
Of my?
Of your? Yes.
May I ask, Grace, are you accepting of the option being proposed by Planning Commission?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. What was the question? I'm sorry.
There, you know, since we have some new members and people who have not followed your case for years.
Yep.
I was at the last Planning Commission, but for other people, do you want to give a quick synopsis of what your issue is?
My issue is, we purchased a built-in grill prior to changing the law. The grill got put on 16 weeks deferred because of the igniter, because of COVID. In the meantime, you changed the rules, and so we have not been able to do it for two and a half years. So that's what has happened. And I think that there's been a lot of discussion about it. George, you were served on the committee very eloquently. Thank you very much. I know I've talked to some of you about it, but I think what they have decided is a fair, reasonable ordinance resolution issue. I don't know what you'd call it at this point, but I'd like to see it move on so we don't have to wait for a third season. So, if there's any questions, I'm ready. Thanks, George, for your effort. Thanks, George.
And, go ahead. And I believe you are not available next city council meeting when it will be voted on. So you are indicating your preference now.
Yes. Yes, I'm indicating my preference now. I was going to email you when I got home, or when it, if this goes through, that the next meeting I will not be able to attend. So I'll be doing flips from the television if it actually passes. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Grace.
Joe Wilkins, 811 Indiana Street. I want to first thank Planning Commissioners Mike Nice and Janice Varney for recognizing the limited powers of the Planning Commission and for respecting the vote of the city council. I want to thank both of them for realizing that there has been an election. The residents have spoken, which has resulted in a change in council with perhaps different goals and objectives. For the past four years, I've sat in these meetings, listening to the challenges that our city has been facing. And while talking to many residents on the campaign trail on last year, what came across to me loud and clear was their desire for change. Point blank, our residents want change. So when it comes to moving our city, our community in the right direction in order to achieve these desired changes, I feel councilperson Mary Hosley is the right choice to represent the changes, the residents, and the city council on the Planning Commission. Therefore, I ask the city council to vote yes on Resolution 2024-06, appointing councilperson Mary Hosley as the city council ex officio member. I have no doubt that Mary would do an outstanding job. What I've come to know about Mary is that she is not only a caring, passionate, and committed person on all tasks that's set before her. In addition, Mary is very detail oriented. You've heard me say that many times. And after all, the open creative interpretation of the zoning ordinances over the past few years, Mary's eye for objectivity is much needed at this time for our overall health, safety, and welfare of our community. Mary's attention to detail has been seen in her advocating to ensure that the maximum lock coverage is not exceeded. Mary continues to push for resolution to the known citywide issues with drainage from residential construction. Mary was the one who identified the typographical error that allowed three-story homes to be built in residential areas when the ordinance was amended to only allow two stories in 2015. I truly believe Mary's, besides Mary's keen eye for details, that she can fairly balance the need of residents and all stakeholders, and her legal background will certainly help her with these balances. To George, I worked with you for many years at Palisades. You've always been a standout person. I appreciate all the work that you have done on planning and for just being a valuable contributor to our city. As you know, in November, we had an election. The residents have spoken, and I hope you can appreciate and respect the voices of the residents as well as the vote of the council in the direction and changes that will come as our community moves forward with the help of our new council. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Jack.
Hello. Jack Fitzher, 24 and a half Grand Boulevard. I just want to say one thing, and that's congratulations to this new board. You have an opportunity to make changes and to do things that haven't been done in the last number of years. I've seen too many occurrences where really unjust things have happened, maybe because it was the way it had been done in the past. It's no longer time to do the way things were done in the past. We have an opportunity to make that change now. Mary will be an excellent member of the Planning Commission. George did his job and was an excellent member. But it is time for change, and congratulations to Mary.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hi, Jim.
Hello. Jim Hale, 266 Oak Street. As a former longtime member of the Planning Commission, I know that whomever is selected by the council to represent them is an invaluable asset for communication between the Planning Commission and the council. I'm here this evening to fully endorse and support the vote that a majority of you cast last January 2nd, to appoint Mary Hosley as the council ex officio member to the to the Planning Commission for the remainder of her term. I do believe that Mary will listen, will find compromises that fall within a fair and reasonable interpretation of our city charter, city code, and city zoning ordinances. Mary has a history of scrutinizing various proposed developments in regard to both environmental issues and critical parking issues in our residential areas. Her legal background forces her to look at things and matters from all different perspectives. I believe she will focus on what is right for South Haven based on her discussions with not only the registered voters, but all stakeholders. I've known her for a relatively short time, but in speaking with those who've known her for much longer, I've come to understand that people who know her have heard that she is a straightforward shooter, does not back down when challenged, when she is certain of the facts on her side. If she is, if she does find a problem with an issue and receives new facts, she has no problem with compromising that position and changing her situation based on those facts. I understand that Mary has communicated with the city council, or did communicate on both December 29th and 30th about the appointment process of the city council member to the Planning Commission. Mary's eye to detail with execution of our local laws as written should be welcomed as a breath of fresh air. The city council has voted. Tonight's vote is simply to commemorate to writing what was voted on January 2nd. I urge you to let this vote go through and allow democracy to occur. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, we're moving on. Next, the approval of a consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda items A through I.
I second.
I would, I motion to withdraw.
There's already a motion.
I motion to amend, to withdraw A, to have discussion on the minutes.
There's no support, so the motion dies?
You don't need a second to pull something from consent.
On consent agenda, one person can ask to have pulled out.
Okay, yep, sorry. You're right. Okay, we're taking item?
A.
A out.
For discussion.
For discussion.
Should that be item 9A then?
Yes. So we're moving it to?
It'll be newly created item 9A to discuss the city council minutes from January 2nd.
Yes. Any other changes?
Well, if that motion needs a second, I'll go ahead and second the motion.
Okay, thank you. So the consent agenda is, we are taking out item 9A? Oh, we're taking out?
A.
A.
8A.
8A and moving it to Old Business 9A. Thank you. Next?
Vote.
So you'll have a vote on items, consent items B through I is the?
I thought we could just do it without voting.
No, we still have it on here that we do a consent vote, a vote on consent.
Okay, okay. All in favor, say aye.
It's a roll call, I apologize. Okay, a roll call vote for the consent agenda B through I. Hosley?
Yes.
Onuki?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
And Brown?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to Old Business.
Then we go to 9A, Mary's item. Correct, correct.
I'm sorry?
Now we're on to 9A, the item that Ms. Hosley would like to discuss.
Correct.
Correct? Yep.
In, may I, Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
In reviewing the minutes, and I sent in comments, I'm going to simplify them, having just had training right before this meeting. I would move to, under Agenda Item 6, I would move to, move to strike anything after, address the council for each of the three speakers, such that it would read Clark Gruber, 305 Erie Street, address the city council. Joe Wilkins, 811 Indiana, address the city council. Tricia Shepherd, 214 Superior Street, address the council. For Agenda 8A, I would insert before the motion that there was a discussion about, a discussion about the item. For Agenda Item 12, I would, I'm, I would insert, sorry, I had things made out, but I'm shortening them. I would insert, Hosley inquired about beach safety being a priority matter or a standard matter. I'm sorry. So I would insert after beach safety being a priority matter or standard matter, and then, and, and that would be an end of sentence. And then a new sentence would start that Brown clarified that beach safety would be discussed. No, I'm sorry, beach safety discussion will be held during the priority setting workshop.
I'm sorry, can you clarify? So this is on item 12, and in the minutes it currently states, Hosley inquired about beach safety and if a discussion will be held during the priority session workshop, and that's the end of that, barring the vote. And I'm, and so you're, you're, you want to modify that line to say what now?
Actually, thank you for clarifying. I will simplify. I would, I would leave that as it currently stands. And I would say Brown clarified that beach safety will be discussed at the priority setting workshop at the end. So there would be no striking. So it would read in its entirety, Hosley inquired about beach safety and if a discussion will be held. Oh. Insert before or during the? So in, before would be inserted before, during the priority setting workshop. So it would read Hosley inquired about beach safety and if a discussion will be held before or during the priority setting workshop. And Brown clarified that beach safety would be discussed at the priority setting workshop.
So in some cases, you're deleting comments that were made?
No.
By, like, from Clark Gruber?
Correct.
And in other cases, you're inserting comments and new comments to the minutes?
Correct. So for the Agenda Item 6, for public comment, it was inconsistent with how it was presented. And because the minutes do not need to say what was discussed, just actions taken, I thought it would be more simple and more uniform if we simply said addressed the council and then struck anything after that.
But it's not fair to delete someone's comment and what they said, and yet add comments that you want?
So I'm not adding their comments on what I am adding for Agenda Item 12 was what I had said. If you prefer that the comments not be stricken, then I have different amendments to show exactly, to clarify what was said. Because Agenda Item 8A was not newly added, it was amended Agenda Item 7I. The, the descriptions of the public comments do not, are not accurately reflecting what had happened.
First of all, let's remember that our clerk is trained in taking minutes. So she has been trained in what to do. I just think it's not fair and it's not accurate to remove what comments were made by the public and then add, and then add more to what you want to be said.
I appreciate your concern, Madam Chair, Madam Mayor. And as I, as I submitted my comments to both you and, and Ms. Hosier yesterday morning, I had actually provided, not removing what the public said, but clarifying that Mr. Gruber spoke not only of the new council, but also appointment of city council member to Planning Commission. And, and no offense, newly added could be misinterpreted as it wasn't on the agenda, but it was on the agenda, and it was amended Agenda Item 7CI.
Oh, believe me, those were newly.
If, if I may, I think there was some confusion. When, when that motion to remove Item 7C, I believe it was, 7CI, there, there was a creation of a newly agenda item, and I think it was clear for people who were just reading the minutes, what happened to Item 7CI if it was not voted on in the consent agenda? And I think that's quite basically what the clerk is trying to write in there is that there was a creation of that new 8A because there wasn't one before. It's trying to make the minutes easy to read for someone who wasn't at the meeting and may be reading these, if not tomorrow, or whenever the minutes are done, or 10 years from now. And I believe that's why it's been written there as a newly created agenda item because you, you have moved things out and created a new agenda item because that item didn't occur as Item 8A. It did occur as Item 7CI, but it was taken out of the consent agenda to discuss.
Madam Mayor?
Go ahead.
If you want to leave newly added Agenda Item 8A, then for it to accurately help people figure out what went where, it should also add then that it is amended Agenda Item 7I, 7CI. So it's clear where it came from.
Okay, so, so Item 8A, so I know that you have an insertion of there, there was a discussion held. So I'm going to guess that after that, there should be either preceding a discussion was held, there should be something in either quotations saying that this was moved from the consent agenda from Item 7CI to I, Item 8A.
That, that sounds acceptable. It's just the, the minutes, as they now occur, it doesn't reflect that, that there was a discussion before the motion.
Respectfully, none of the other items say there was a discussion because they are just the record of the vote. If that's, if the council wants to make these changes, we're perfectly fine making them. I do, would, I would, however, like some, some, some guidance going forward so we're not doing this at each meeting. Is that typically when we do receive public comment, the clerk writes in there what the comment was on, either the item or spoken favor, spoken opposition? Is that no longer the will of the council to put down what the item they spoke on?
I am fine with putting what their comment was. Whatever, whatever it was.
I understand that, but there's a motion on the floor to amend.
Mr. Arnold?
I, I believe that we probably need to have, look to the staff for guidance in this one that, as you mentioned, Megan has received the training, and I entrust that she properly knows how to take minutes. If something were forgotten, certainly that's where we come in, where we, in doing, reading our packet, reading the minutes, we can bring things to her attention that this was missed or that was missed. But I think the proper way to record minutes, we should look to the city staff for doing that.
I agree. Okay, so the motion, oh, Mr. Sleeper.
Yeah, Madam Mayor. One of the notes I just took in our training was that the minute should reflect what was done, not what was said. I looked at the minutes, they seemed pretty good to me. One of the things we talked about in our training is getting together maybe and talking about our processes going forward. And that may be a good time to discuss, you know, Kate's question about, you know, if we want to change how we do our minutes, so.
That's a good suggestion.
And, 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 Mr. Sleeper, exactly why I initially, why I changed what I had sent to Madam Mayor and Kate yesterday is looking at just the actions. And so I had removed the comments. One other item that with regard to Ms. Shepherd is that the comment was that it was on a non-agenda item. It was with regard to short-term rentals. We were setting our dates for priority settings. Short-term rentals is a priority. So there could be some misunderstanding that it was an agenda item. And so I thought that that was not a, a fair representation saying it was not an agenda item, especially when she was not given notice before she started speaking that it was a non-agenda item.
She was allowed to speak her whole time?
No, I know.
Mr. Arnold?
To, to that, I did, I don't know if anyone else, Ms. Hosley did share her thoughts on the minutes. I saw them, I don't know if anyone else did. And, and this is kind of where I think we need to look to the staff because I did not interpret Ms. Shepherd's comments the same as Ms. Hosley did. I, you, you were reminded that we were talking about things on the agenda, and she said, "Oh, I apologize." She was giving her full time, but then said, "Oh, I apologize. I forgot this is not on the agenda." And then stepped aside, is how I remembered it. And so that's why I think we need to look to staff on how to correctly do the minutes so that it's not up to council interpretation of what was said. I mean, we do have the video recording, we can go and check that, and the public can always go and check that. But as far as the official minutes, I think we need to look to the staff for that.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, the motion right now is?
Restate, oh, sorry. If you could restate the full motion that you'd like to make as we don't have a second on the floor at the moment? Just how you would like to amend the minutes? Yep. After discussion.
With the understanding that comments do want to be left on, I move to amend the minutes that at the end of Clark Gruber's, it would add, and an appointment, and appointment of city council member to Planning Commission. At the end of Joe Wilkins, it would clarify, it would add that is amended Agenda Item 7CI. And I would, for Trish Shepherd, I would say, I would strike an item not on the agenda and add short-term rentals. For Agenda Item 8A, I would add that there was, I would add, I would insert before the motion by Mr. Reeser, council discussed the process. And for Agenda Item 12, I would add at the end, insert at the end, Mayor Brown clarified that beach safety would be discussed at the priority setting workshop. And there was one other Agenda Item 13. After Great Lakes Surf Rescue, I would insert project.
So once again, you're deleting some comment language?
No.
And adding more from the original?
The only deletion is an item not on the agenda.
And are you deleting comments that Mr. Gruber made?
No.
Okay.
I added at the end, insert at the end, and appointment of a city council member to Planning Commission.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call? Or do you want more discussion? Any other comments?
I understand wanting to amend minutes for clarity. I personally am not sure of the record of these changes, so I don't feel comfortable supporting it without looking back at the video.
Any other discussion? Okay, roll call.
Yes, ma'am. Onuki?
No.
Reeser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
No.
Hosley?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
That is three noes, four yeses, motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, next, the city council will be asked to approve Resolution 2024-06, a resolution appointing Mary Hosley as the city council ex-official member.
Ms. Mayor? I would move to approve the 2024-06, a resolution appointing Mary Hosley as the city council ex officiado member.
A second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? George?
The point of order?
Oh, Mr. Reeser. Thank you.
I think it's important to say this, I never made the motion two weeks ago in any way to try to harm George, shorten him in any way. I respect him and never did I want to see this community start to divide again as someone mentioned tonight. I truly believe that not only do we need some changes occasionally, but I want to go back to what Clark Gruber said, that he had to make a hard decision at one point and he said, finally it came down to what the residents want. If there is one thing I'm certain of sitting up here, that I am going to fight for the residents, especially when it comes to an issue that Mayor and I both believe in, and that's affordable housing. And tied in with that is short-term rentals. So Mary, I know her position, I know she feels strongly about it. That is one of the many reasons, which many of you said the other reason, excuse me, other reasons, that is one of the big reasons. So I just want you to know why I made the motion. It was never intended to be a negative against George, I have nothing but respect for him.
Mr. Sleeper?
I never wanted to be in the center of any controversy. I'm glad though, by the many people who have shown me their support. I don't have a problem with me not being on Planning Commission, I do have a problem with the way it was done. None of the correspondence that I saw prior to the January 2nd meeting indicated anything to the contrary of me still being on Planning Commission. I fully understand if some of my fellow council members want to take the council in a different direction. I am worried though, that this new direction will result in a loss of something good. I always felt that no matter how I disagreed with my fellow council members, I could always count on us being respectful of one another. I'm afraid that we may have lost that. The respect that was once there no longer exists and that going forward, the end is going to justify the means. One may ask why this makes a difference and my answer is that the community as a whole is a reflection of the council. If we, on city council, go down the path of not respecting those we disagree with, so could the community as a whole and that would be a significant loss to the community. That is what I worry about with this new direction. I feel, I still feel I am the best choice to be the city council representative on Planning Commission and therefore I'm going to vote no on this resolution.
Thank you. Mr. Arnold?
I, I've heard the, the comments about process and I do have those fears, but I give all my council people the benefit of the doubt. I don't believe that anything like that was going on. I will not be voting for this because as, as Mr. Reeser said, I'm listening to my residents, specifically my constituents. In Ward 2, the number one thing I was here from Ward 2, fix the roads, working on it, trying. The bike path was the next thing that people, we need that bike path because it's so hard to walk. And leaf pickup, boy, that really windy and I, that was a lot about leaf pickups last year. And then this, this is the thing, when I was at Myers or, or if I was at Wolverine Hardware looking for a screwdriver or Harbor Light having a pint, Ward 2 people came to me and they didn't like the way this went down and again, I'm not speaking of that, but they felt that George is the most qualified. Not that Mary isn't great, I think Mary would, will do great and, and will be great, but I'm simply voting no because of what I heard from my voters, my constituents.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I really had no idea walking into the January meeting that we were just going through, going to have all this controversy, just trying to do what's best for the city. And again, I fully respect George, I know he's done a great job on Planning Commission. I'm so proud to serve beside him in this role. And if there was a better way to change things up, then I, I just don't know what that option was at the time. So that could be a shortcoming of mine. I hear from my constituents all across the board, obviously a lot support George and I fully understand that, being a big fan of George myself. A lot want change too and they bring up the election. John brought up the good point of having new people serve and just get the expertise in different areas, like we can do that, I think that's a great idea. So I feel like we're between a rock and a hard place here and I just have to again vote my conscience. So I will be supporting Mary, but I do not mean any disrespect to George.
First, I'd like to say that George is, is a really great guy. I have no doubt that he's done a great job on planning and he's always very caring, always asks about my son who happens to be an engineer like himself and I respect him to the utmost. I heard a lot from the community in Ward 1, their desires and so this is why I'm voting yes tonight.
Thank you.
Madam Chair? I, like George, do not like to be the center of controversy. And I apologize if it, for any unexpected outcomes. I sent the emails. I had indicated that there would be, the resolution would need to have a blank for whomever is selected, that the code, city code does not provide for a mayoral recommendation. I appreciate that it has been done that way as custom. And as we learned just about two hours ago, that code trumps custom. And I want to assure everyone that I, if, if selected, I will be honored to be on the Planning Commission. I have been a frequent person in front of the Planning Commission, have been, have reviewed ordinances, have assisted with identifying areas to make amendments to the draft ordinances that were incorporated into the ordinances as passed. I will be and remain open to people coming to me and, and raising concerns. I keep an open mind and I search for data. I am a data miner. And it's all about what is right in the overall scheme of things for the overall community. As we all know, what happens in one ward affects other wards. And if selected, I look forward to working with everyone and thank you.
Mr. Arnold?
And then, Mrs. Mayor, I think we've all commented about how we're thinking about a vote and then if, if I may, want to direct a, a question to Kate. Some of our, our guests tonight also mentioned about the process and I did, I brought it up last meeting, I, Mary, having done her homework, noticed this error in that we had been simply doing by appointment. And so then I just, just so everyone knows, you did seek a legal opinion and everything that we had done for the last 20 years is legal, but we should have been doing it this way, right?
So I didn't seek, I guess I didn't seek a legal opinion, meaning that we have a memorandum to discuss, but I did run the situation by our attorneys. And so what we have found is that, as Mary Hosley has found, that there was a resolution that was needed to appoint the ex-official member. Now, that doesn't mean that the mayor can't make the recommendation that has, that has been done, but to follow your code, your charter, I'm sorry, your code of ordinances, which does require a resolution to be done. So that was, that was proper for her to bring that up. While I thanked her for the resolution, we do have very good attorneys that, that draft these things all the time for us and quite honestly, I, no offense to you, but I kind of go with those folks who do municipal law. So we do have the resolution that's been put in your packet that is coming from the city attorney's office and so this has been reviewed by them. I should say that, and I think this was getting confused last time, the mayor can't make the, a recommendation for the appointment like, like she does for, like we have for any number of years, but ultimately it's up to council to ratify that, one, and that two, particularly for the Planning Commission state, it has to be done with a resolution attached to that.
Go ahead.
Thank you for the clarification and then I was also wondering, that doesn't mean that the work of the Planning Commission for the last 20 years is undone, it, we were okay with how we did it, we just weren't doing it.
Correct, and there is actually provision in that resolution that the city attorney did put in there that this resolution would ratify all previous decisions, making sure that everything has been done correctly. And one point of order, if I may, if that's not the appropriate thing, is that I know that it's been claimed here tonight that it's nepotism regarding Clark Gruber and quite honestly, our charter defines nepotism, nepotism actually applies to you seven and myself. So if any one of your family members or my family members wanted to become an employee here, that is a nepotistic issue that would be, we'd have to address with the charter. However, other city members, city, city appointees to boards and commissions or my staff are not part of the nepotism policy per, per our charter.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a few comments. People from Denver to Washington DC watched our city council meeting on January 2nd. People are upset, blindsided and disappointed in your hidden agenda to nominate Mary Hosley to the Planning Commission over George Sleeper. You don't have to be the sharpest tool in the toolbox to notice that, as Tim Stegman said, this act was planned and rehearsed. Most importantly, none of these four council members told me, the mayor, there was going to be a change in the agenda. And I had met with each of you, one-on-one. There was a total lack of transparency. This was cowardly. This is not a best practice. This is not honest. This is what Dr. Martin Luther King called conniving methods.
Quiet, please.
In fact, South Haven voters are recruiting candidates now to run against those of you who are at the end of your term. A petition was turned in tonight. One person who serves on a city commission said if Mary Hosley is on the Planning Commission, they are quitting. Thank you to the Planning Commission for your resolution to city council to retain George Sleeper on the Planning Commission. George has served on city council and served on the Planning Commission. He serves on the recadification committee. He has been training with the Michigan Municipal League longer than some city council members have lived in South Haven. Some of you council members have children. You are their role models. Is this how you want your children to operate behind your backs? If you don't think you violated the Open Meetings Act, you are definitely tiptoeing around the perimeter of the law. Shame on you. Tonight, we have another opportunity to do the right thing, to act with integrity, to become a city council that is respected, not ridiculed. And when you vote, you look George Sleeper right in the eye. Thank you.
Can I make a second comment? I think I'm allowed to make a second. I will try to say this more polite than you did. I would never call one of my fellow council persons, I would not refer to my city council persons ever as cowardly or read anything that would imply such a thing. We're all up here for one reason, the same as you, trying to serve the residents in this town. Whether you agree or disagree, we're doing what we think is best. And if you think I'm going to be ashamed of my decision or have anyone who knows me be ashamed of my decision, you're sadly mistaken. And I'm sorry that you and I ran against each other and we're having this kind of a discussion. We talked about trying to come together. I'm sorry, Annie, this is not how you bring people together, calling us cowardly who voted last time and who probably will vote again that way tonight. Thank you.
Okay, we're ready for a vote?
I feel like I would like to respond to this also, if I may.
Go ahead.
I honestly don't know where to start. When we met, this was not even an option on the table. I didn't know that resolution requirement existed, so I did what I thought was the right thing at the time. New information became available. I was enjoying my winter break with my children, didn't really check email a lot until the day before the council meeting, which was New Year's Day, which I was also trying to enjoy with my family. Mary called me and told me that procedurally this was, it needed to be by resolution and that's it, that we, that was what I understood, was that we got to decide as a council and not the mayor deciding. When I talked to Kate that, the day of the meeting, she said that she ran it by the attorney and that it would be on next week's agenda. So I wasn't even thinking it was going to come up at that meeting, I thought it would be at this meeting that we would discuss it. Joe and I talk about many issues all the time. Actually, at an MML meeting last week, we were told that's a good thing, we just can't influence votes, we can't tell each other what to do. We never do that. I just have a respect for him and we have a common view on things and we like to share our thoughts on ideas. So that is not being sneaky, I'm not pushing an agenda, I'm trying to do what I think is right. I encourage anybody who wants to sit in the seat to do it, see how easy it is for you. I'm not changing my vote.
Thank you.
I'm sorry that that, I am really sorry that that is hurting feelings.
Fairly.
When you and I met, it was December 7th, the day before I was having knee surgery, I actually indicated a desire to be on Planning Commission and you would not even discuss with me about that. When I, and at that time, I said it was by city council approval. I then started after my surgery and everything else. I started looking at the city code, the city charter, and that is when I discovered that it was requiring a resolution. And I brought that up as soon as I saw the, as soon as I could, after the agenda published, I had other timely obligations and I sent the email on Friday.
It didn't mention your name?
Because I, I was not nominating myself. I was saying it had to be a discussion. And in fact, at the meeting on January 2nd, I even inquired about whether it should be tabled or postponed.
Quiet, please.
So, so similar to what Councilman Reeser said, I do not find your comments helpful of moving things forward. I believe at the MML training, we were encouraged that once the city council votes, we move forward to help the community move forward. And I could raise other issues, but I heard at our training earlier today that once the city council votes, you should not rehash other discussions. So I will end it and just, again, I-
I agree, we'll be moving forward. Okay, the motion is, has been moved to seconded. To approve Resolution 2024-06, a resolution appointing Mary Hosley as the city council ex officio member. Roll call?
Yes, ma'am. Reeser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
No.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold? Hosley?
Yes.
Onuki?
Yes.
Anne Brown?
No.
Motion carries.
Moving on. New business. The city council will be asked to consider the approval of the following special event applications. And if you make the motion, all could be approved with one motion.
I-
Madam Mayor?
Go ahead.
I would move to approve Special Event 2024-03, Art Fair 2024, to be held July 5th through the 7th, 2024, from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM at the Stanley Johnston Park. Special Event 2024-04, Oktoberfest 5.5 K 2024, to be held, oh, to be held on September 28th, 2024, beginning at 6:30 AM, set up until 10:00 AM for the race and 3:00 PM for the event. Special Event 2024-05, We Care Island Sit 2024, to be held on the Phoenix Street Island on February 24th, 2024, from 7:00 AM until 7:00 PM. Special Event 2024-06, Light Up the Lake Fireworks 2024, to be held on July 3rd, 2024, starting at approximately 10:30 PM until, from the North Pier.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Oh, staff.
Well, thank you. I do know that I have some comments from Carrie Hagie from the art fair. She was unable to make the meeting today. This is an event that's coming back, is a routine event that the council usually sees before it. It's a standard event in the summer of the juried art fair to be held in July 5th through the 7th at Stanley Johnston Park. I've been in discussions with Carrie. She is maybe looking at adding a shuttle to that event, but we're in discussions for, so I have nothing really more to add, just that she's looking at alternative parking and of course, transportation to the event. Everything else seems to be fairly mundane from year to year. I, if you'd like, I can talk about the other items.
Mr. Feeney is in the audience, if you'd like to talk about Oktoberfest?
Well, I know that we did have the items, to talk about items on the agenda. I guess I would-
Go ahead.
If there are questions that I can't seem to answer, but Mr. Feeney is here.
Okay.
We do have the Oktoberfest 5.5. I also know that, that last year was the first year for that event, seemed to go well. I know it's a, it's not a 5K, it's a 5.5, so it's a unique event. And I also know that it is, it's got the, I Was Caught By the Bridge. And maybe, George, did you run in that event?
I did not this year, no.
I don't see any necessarily changes with the Oktoberfest 5.5. I guess I should say the route is a bit different from last year. The route will not go onto Maple Street. But due to the great response last year, they're giving up and adding extra porta potties this year because of the demand. The Island Sit is with We Care. It's our typical event where I think it's a warm your heart. So they're raising funding for home heating for people in need. It's right out here at the Welcome Island here on Phoenix Street. And that's sponsored by We Care. The last event is Light Up the Lakes Fireworks. Again, we always have these on July 3rd. That's been put in the packet. I know there was a question as to whether or not it was signed. And we do have the signed copy in our office, but the unsigned copy was put into the packet. So we believe everything is pretty standard with that one, not a lot of changes. If there are changes, we do anticipate that there, we could be bringing that back to an, for an amendment.
Thank you.
Mr. Arnold?
I, I always like to mention the art fair that it's, and you mentioned already that it's a juried art fair, that the art center always likes to mention that, that it's not, you know, trinkets, it's, there are actual artists. For the Oktoberfest, I know my wife volunteered at the Caught By the Bridge and she said it was a lot of fun and the participants really enjoyed it. So looking forward to seeing that one. We Care, of course, for manliness important. And then, Light Up the Lake, well, that's, you wanted to be mayor, okay. So all great events, and we always like it when they apply real early.
The 5.5 K T-shirts are going to be hard to beat. So those were amazing. Thank you. Any other comments?
I just, I also volunteered at the Oktoberfest and look forward to doing it again.
Thank you. Okay, sounds like we're ready to vote. And the motion is the approval of all the following special event applications, A, B, C, and D. All in favor? Say aye.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. The motion passes. Thank you. Next, the city council will be asked to take the following actions regarding an amendment to Section 1714 of the South Haven zoning ordinance. A, introduce an ordinance amendment to regulate the placement of permanent outdoor fire pits, fireplaces, and barbecues. Is there a motion?
I move to introduce an ordinance amendment to regulate the placement of permanent outdoor fire pits, fireplaces, and barbecues.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I look forward to it getting set and a vote being taken.
Thank you. Okay.
Griffin came up.
Oh, Griffin. Do you have an update?
I do. Good evening, everyone. Appreciate the chance to share a little bit of background on this topic with you. So going back to September 2021, the city council adopted an ordinance regulating the placement of permanent fire pits, fireplaces, and barbecues. Following that adoption, as many of you were aware, concerns were raised by local businesses and members of the public that the ordinance was overly restrictive and didn't work well with the different sized lots in the city of South Haven. So in April 2022, the city council requested that the topic be reviewed by the planning commission. Following significant review by the planning commission in a subcommittee of the planning commission, it was proposed that two options be sent back to the city council for further direction. Ultimately, the city council directed to send Option A back to the planning commission. That proposed amendment would not change the definitions of permanent outdoor fire pit, fireplace, or barbecue, but would remove setbacks from structures and establish setbacks from property lines based on the unit type and fuel source. The proposed amendments would also clarify that established setbacks would be measured from the outside wall of the cooking or burning element of the firebox. So ultimately, on November 20th, the city council voted unanimously that the planning commission proceed with that option, Option A. And on January 4th, 2024, the planning commission hosted the required public hearing on that option and voted to send it back to the city council. So as you all have already begun to do, the action being requested of you all this evening is to introduce the ordinance and schedule a public hearing for a future city council meeting where the public hearing can be held and a vote can be considered.
Thank you.
With that in mind, I'd like to add an additional motion to set the public hearing to occur on February 5th, 2024, the regular city council meeting.
I second?
Second.
Okay, so are we passing these together or one at a time?
Hold on, I believe that there wasn't, there wasn't a vote on the first motion?
Right.
It wasn't. We still need to vote on those two, yeah.
Okay.
Point of order, I don't think we can have, are they too separate? You didn't amend the motion, so we can only have one active motion.
I think you're correct, yeah.
Let's go, that's okay.
I was thinking, I was speeding it along, but I think Mary's right.
Let's go back to Letter A, and we are voting on this. Roll call?
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Hosley?
Yes.
Onuki?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, B. Okay, so you made the motion?
Yep.
And it's been seconded.
Nice.
Any discussion? Okay, this is a motion to set the public hearing to occur at the February 5th, 2024, regular city council meeting. And this is regarding the regulation of the placement of permanent outdoor fire pits, fire pits, fireplaces, and barbecues. Okay, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. The motion passes. Thank you, Grace. Next, the city council will be asked to accept the 2024 Short Term Rental Snapshot Report.
I move to accept the 2024 Short Term Rental Snapshot Report.
I second. Any discussion? Staff?
Thank you. What you all have before you is the 2024 Short Term Rental Snapshot Report. Clearly, instead of reading the report to you, I'm just gonna spend a minute to walk through kind of the different components of the report. It is relatively similar to what you all have seen in the past, but I'll highlight a few differences. First, if you're, if you're looking at the cover memo or the staff report itself, I would just like to highlight that this has included in it the screenshot or an image of the language from the short term rental ordinance that really dictates what's being brought before you all this evening. It, you know, outlines that honor before January 15th of each year, that city staff will prepare an official report, including a number of different items. I also would like to highlight that something that we included as an attachment in addition to the 2024 Short Term Rental Snapshot Report is a presentation that was presented at a short term rental workshop in April of 2023 that went into quite a bit of detail on how the numbers are determined that are put into these annual reports. So I apologize, because I do think there was a little bit of confusion that the numbers in that presentation differed from the 2024 Snapshot Report. So I just want to highlight that the Snapshot Report are the official numbers. That presentation had a previous year's numbers, but was to highlight the way by which those different figures are calculated, the process that staff uses to prepare the report. So if you move on to the Snapshot Report itself, so I'm now on page 129 of the packet. It starts with the annual inventory of registered short term rentals. So that has been completed. As of January 4th, there are 773 short term rental units in the city of South Haven, which is a 9.2% increase from the 708 registered of the same date last year. Based on the calculation that can be broken down below, there are 497 non-exempt business short term rental units that will be allowed in 2024. There were 470 non-exempt business short term rental units as of January 4th, 2024, which means that there are 27 new non-short, or non-exempt business short term rental certificates available in 27, in 2024. I'll say that one more time, I'm sorry. There are 27 new non-exempt business short term rental certificates available in 2024. Because there are 27 new short term rental certificates available, but we have, as of the date, of the date in this report, January 4th, there were more than 27 eligible applications on file in the building department. For the first time this year, barring any changes to the ordinance or action by city council, we would be moving forward with the lottery allocation process that's outlined. I've included this year some more detail on that process. This is not something we've had to do in the past, so want to make sure you all, and city council members of the public, understand what that means and what that looks like. So just to highlight that briefly, individuals interested in a short term rental, non-exempt business permit that do not already have one, so a new permit, they would have until the end of January to submit an application to the building department. And then by the end of February, actually, this is a leap year. So per the ordinance, February 28th, a lottery would be held to draw the allocation of the 27 available non-exempt business short term rentals. I would also like to highlight that applications not selected via the public lottery process will not be held for 2025. Instead, interested property owners would need to reapply during the next year's application cycle for consideration in 2025, assuming that there are additional permits available at that time. Moving on to the rest of the report, similar to previous years, we have some of the historical trend data that we've included in the past, both as a bar graph and as a table. We also move into kind of the breakdown of some statistical areas that the city has created for illustration purposes. As a reminder, these areas are not noted anywhere in any of the ordinances. It's more just been for understanding of this body in the planning commission to see how they are spread out throughout the city. We've included three of the maps we've used in the past. The first one being all short term rentals and parcels with dwelling units, all registered short term rentals, and registered short term rentals, specifically those that are in the business non-exempt category. We then move on to some summary data, including maximum occupancy breakdown, inspection statistics, and code enforcement numbers. And lastly, we have a summary of revenue and expenditures of this program. Specifically, I'd like to highlight that this is by fiscal year. And I know that gets a little bit challenging when we have some conversations, but just as a reminder for city council, you know, clearly, the Snapshot Report is done on a calendar year, but because of the city's accounting practices and audit practices in our fiscal year, which is a July through June, that's how our financial records have to go. So we both have the final audited, so actual numbers for fiscal year 2223, which was completed last year, and then projections of how we're tracking for this year, both of which, as you can see from the report, we're tracking significantly in the green. With that, I'm gonna stop there. We'll let you all kind of digest that a little bit and discuss, and I'm prepared to answer any questions you all may have.
So this is a report for us to approve?
Technically, by ordinance, the city council does not have to approve it. The practice has been that it's been brought to the city council. Clearly, short term rentals are a topic that's of high interest to our community. But practice has been that this report has been accepted by the city council. But if you look at the ordinance language, that is not a requirement.
Thank you. Mr. Reeser?
So, question. What we would be accepting is the validity of these numbers, but doesn't mean tonight we are accepting how we're gonna go forward managing short term rentals. Namely, on August 21st, if you recall, it was discussed that we would do away with the ratio, have a number. We talked about the possibility of trying to bring the numbers down. We talked about a lot of things, and it seemed like we had a good, open discussion with some possibilities. So will we have time in the next city council or two to discuss this and possibly make changes to how we go forward?
Maybe I'll jump into that one.
Go ahead.
So I've talked to a number of you about potentially having a work session February 5th before our regular meeting to kind of get everyone's temperature taking, if you will, on where we stand with the proposed changes that were looked at last December. We do have two new members now. Want to make sure that what is being discussed is in line with that, or if that's not in line with them, where do we need to go with that? So we were talking about possibly having a work session on 2/5 before our regular scheduled meeting to discuss short term rentals and the proposed changes that were from last year, because that remains our number one priority. This Snapshot Report doesn't touch any of that. This snapshot report doesn't touch any of that. This still has the ratio because that's what's currently on the books. While we have had those discussions about short-term rentals, nothing has been put into codified law, if you will, that has gone to the planning commission that you all have received a recommendation on for you all to make any changes. So there's been no amendments to the short-term rental ordinances. We've discussed a lot and have a good idea which way you all would want to go, but as I said, no changes have been made. So this report just tells you the number of business non-exempt permits that could be allocated, that will be allocated unless council wants to make some other decision, i.e., some changes to the allocation process that would have immediate effect.
Thank you. That's how I recall our conversation today.
Okay.
Thanks.
Mrs. Hasley?
Ms. Hasley or Councilwoman?
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. For the expenses, and I do appreciate, well, first, thank you so much for clarifying the slides, because of the presentation material from being from last year. I did find that a little confusing. For the expenses, in looking at what was included in the itemized list for the 2223 year versus the 2324 year, I didn't see software. Do we have an annual license fee for that, or is that incorporated in the administration expenses?
Yes, I think it was included in the administration expenses category. We spend significant money annually on software with Granicus, formerly the host compliance system.
But that also includes staff expense also, because we have the STR full-time and half-time.
Which document are you looking at? Maybe I can help you more.
I am looking at...
You're looking at page 139?
I'm looking at this July, I'm comparing the, yeah, the two expenses. So the 2223 is on page 139, and the 2324 is on page 140. And...
Yep, the software costs in the projections are included in the STR-related costs.
Oh, okay. And would that also include legal fees? So we had the economic impact assessment in last year's budget, but I know that there were two enforcement actions that were filed in circuit court and then closed, because the best I could tell, I believe, is they were renting without a permit.
So the STR opinion you're referencing is included in the projected budget for 2023, 2024. So the reasons there are different categories there is it's easier for us to break them out into these different expense categories once the fiscal year is completed, because the numbers aren't changing at that point, everything's done. Where if you look at the projections, these are different categories we have built into our budget line items. So again, it's more of how those are tracked administratively on our side. But I can tell you that, yep, the Rosati Schultz memo that you asked about, it's included in the projections. The software expense that we use every year, it's included in the projections. I mean, those are costs that we have every year specifically related to enforcement actions. So there were two STR cases that were finalized in 2023. I'm not going to name the addresses at this time, probably not relevant. And there was a third one that was set to go to court, but the property only paid the tickets before the court date, so it was dismissed. So, I mean, those are actions that, you know, we're pursuing aggressively, and those costs are being accounted for.
Okay, so that all falls into the STR-related costs, and then at the end of the fiscal year, it would be itemized out, so we could see how it all...
It'll more look like the final, like we've presented the last few years. But yeah, the finance department is able to go back and what's essentially the work behind these numbers. They're able to break out the legal expenses and the different relevant invoices that associate with these costs. I would more draw your attention to, you know, kind of the summary, I think, for council's purposes, kind of looking at the big picture of how the program's tracking is probably a little bit more relevant. And if you look at page 138 in that summary, really what you'll see is that the last five years, for the exception of fiscal year 2019, 2020, which is when the program was impacted significantly by COVID, the program is tracking notably in the green. So that has allowed us this last year, as you'll see from some of the projected increases in expenses, to bring on additional software programs, an additional part-time staff member. So we're trying to be responsive to some of the feedback we've received as ways to improve the program.
Thank you. George?
Thanks, Griffin, for all your explanations. On the applications that are pending, is there some kind of vetting process to make sure that these applications are, you know, they have adequate parking? It looks like they're probably going to pass inspection. And if there's any kind of hiccup when, say somebody wins the lottery and they get their application selected for a business short-term rental, but then they get to their inspection and something messes that up, and they don't, for whatever reason, can no longer be a business short-term rentals, or like a kind of a waiting list of applications then that might begin, get approved?
That's a really good question, and something we're working through right now, being the first year we've had to get to this lottery process. So the first part of your question is, yeah, the ordinance specifically, or yes, excuse me, the ordinance specifically outlines that there's a pre-screening done in regard to parking availability. There's not a pre-inspection done, if you will. But we do pre-screen these applications to make sure that they can meet the parking requirements, and that's why I'll point, you know, notably, as of January 4th, 2024, there were 58 eligible applications. That is already doing the pre-screening for those that we've received. In regard to alternates, let's say, that is a conversation we are having with the city attorney right now. The ordinance doesn't speak to that, and as we've learned from other years, there are, a lot of times, if a property owner doesn't pass an inspection, there are steps that they can take to come into compliance and either do a reinspection and then get passed, or something similar. In this situation, if they're not able to, what happens? We're working with the city attorney to have that clarified by the time we would need to go through the lottery process. So, thank you.
Thank you. One more question. So looking at, on page 138, the revenue expenditures, the five-year net, over $100,000. You know, I know we don't want to be operating in the red like we did in fiscal year 2019, 2020. Is there a point where we might want to look at lowering the fees or anything like that, so that we aren't getting into trouble with having too much of a green number there?
The short answer is yes, there's a point where that's a conversation we might want to have. I'm not of the position we need to have that conversation yet, because the feedback we've been getting from a lot of members of the community, as well as the directives from council, is wanting to see a higher service level. So again, that revenue has allowed us to increase our service level over the last couple years. If that's not something that city council wants to continue, or if, for example, you were going to say, "We don't want to use these additional software services," or "We don't want to have the amount of staff we have there," then that may be a conversation city council would want to have with the manager about rates. But right now, I'm seeing the opposite. I'm seeing the push to increase the service level, increase the staffing, increase the software programs. So that revenue's going to, that's what's going to allow us to do that. The other thing to be cognizant of is we're likely not going to see the revenues continue to increase as we have the last few years, where we've seen pretty dramatic increases in the number of rentals. We're getting very close, if not to, the cap. That's going to really limit our revenue at that point. So if anything, that may level off, and then city council will be able to, excuse me, work with the manager to level off the expenditure to coincide with that, based on the service level you want.
All right, I'm good with that. Thank you.
Ms. Wilkins, any questions?
No, no questions.
No questions.
Any other questions? Okay.
Now, for...
Okay. There's a motion and a second to accept the 2024 short-term rental snapshot report.
We don't have to, but I did make the motion and it was seconded.
Okay, we're ready to vote?
Question, so, sorry, I didn't appreciate the motion. If the report is accepted, does that mean that the lottery will happen in February? How is...
So...
If I may, so, accepting the report really just, one, it's an operation that we have to do under the ordinance, but two, it also sets the number permits that are eligible for the lottery allocation. Now, as I mentioned earlier when I was speaking to Joe's comment, there has been no changes in the underlying ordinance. So council, if council wants to make or have a discussion on what are the tools available to discuss about whether or not the lottery occurs, we're talking about a possible moratorium. If council wishes to stop the lottery, or, you know, freeze the number of business short-term rental permits not exempt in their place, then there needs to be discussion and hopefully a motion, explaining to city staff what you're looking for, so that we can work with the city's attorney to bring the information or the action that you'd like to see at our next meeting on 25.
And...
Go ahead.
With the numbers, then, to give the cap, the numbers had changed some, and it seemed like the new houses allowed were offset by the demolitions, and so that the same number allowed was the same as last year. Right, 497, wasn't that the same number as 2023?
Correct.
Well, no. So the total number was 497, and that there are 470 now being rented, allowing for 27 to go into the lottery?
Correct. And as the city manager mentioned, I think what's of note for city council is the way the ordinance is written is staff prepares the report, staff puts this number out there, it's shared with the public. Unless city council takes some kind of formal action to the contrary, per the ordinance, we would have to move forward with allocating those permits per the lottery process by the end of February. So you would conceivably have until then to contemplate or take some action to change that, if that's what a majority of you all desired.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're ready to vote? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Yes. All opposed, no. The motion passes. Thank you, Griffin.
Then, I would like to, I move to direct staff to do a limited moratorium on granting the 27 allowable, available business short-term rentals for the non-exempt properties.
And we will be discussing this at our workshop.
She can make the motion. Can't she?
It's, my understanding is I couldn't make a motion.
So just to restate, the motion is to direct staff. I guess I missed a portion, but I have limited 27 available business STR non-exempt permits. I think I missed a portion there, so...
Yeah. To do a moratorium, not to issue the 27 available business STR permits for the non-exempt properties. To bring that for discussion at the February 5th city council meeting and... For a vote.
So discuss that.
Is there a second?
Can I make a comment?
Not until we have a second. Okay. The motion fails. We will be discussing this at the February 5th meeting. Okay, thank you.
For clarification, so then no business STR permits will issue before the February 5th? The lottery will not?
No, we have some work to do on that, so we were not anticipating that that would be available. Moreover, the ordinance requires us to notice the lottery, so that would entail for us to make sure that there's a notification placed in the paper, as well as a notification period.
Thank you.
Item 13, the city council will be asked to receive an update from Public Works Director Dana Byrd.
Yeah, well, thanks for having me here tonight. It's my honor to be here, giving my first update before you all. I have a few just kind of updates on daily items at the Public Works. In your packet, you got a report similar to the previous director provided on some larger projects. But first, I want to acknowledge a staff member of mine, Quentin Clark, who's acted as the interim director for the past several months. He's done a lot of heavy lifting for the department and continues to do so as we have an absence of our city engineer position, so... But with that, daily undertakings at the Public Works, winter's here, as we all know, so our crews are out plowing. Appreciate everyone's patience as we try and get everywhere we can all at once. We've also been chasing a few roof leaks. We had one at City Hall here and one over at Chez Building with the heavy wet snow that we had on Friday. And also, the ice rink has been up and running, but with inclement weather and the winds, we've had some closures of that. And so, understand that's a new undertaking for us at Public Works, to be partnering with DDA on that, and appreciate Erin Prebe's efforts there. So in the report, we have several ongoing capital improvement projects, and we're going through budgeting and capital improvement planning season right now. So we're working with staff on that, several large utility system projects, as well as street projects ongoing. And again, I just want to thank everyone in the community for the warm welcome that I've received here. Been on the job for about three weeks now, and it's been great to get to know the staff and all the hard-working people at City Hall and at Public Works. So with that, I'm happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Mr. Arnold?
Welcome again. Speaking of plowing, that's a question I get a lot from my ward. Some people always feel like, "Well, they never get to us," or, you know, "We play favorites," and I know, because I'm lucky enough to get snow days as a teacher, and I see plows come sometimes first thing and then other times in the afternoon. Could you maybe explain the process? Is there a route? Is there different times?
Yeah, yeah, sure. No, I've learned a lot about this this season here with the new snowfall we've had, and we do have a process where we prioritize, you know, the major trunk lines in the community, the business loops, getting to more of the heavily traveled commercial routes, getting downtown cleared, the city major streets. And so, we do prioritize those areas, and then we get into the residential lots and the dead-end streets there. So as much as we try to be everywhere we can at once, we do have a route that we follow. We will get to folks. We do hear from folks, and we appreciate hearing from them. We try and respond as best we can.
I love the idea that Quentin used to run the leaf sucker on the same routes that the snow plows would go, just so the drivers had training of what the routes would be. I thought that was just genius.
Sure, I'll let him know.
So thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Just welcome.
Yes, we are so happy to have you.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next public comment, citizens in the audience will be heard on items not on the agenda.
Hey Dana, what Dana didn't mention is we interviewed him on The Breakfast Club, so you'll get to hear from him on Friday morning at 8:30. So I was at home, well, I wasn't at home, I was with a friend drinking wine.
Rosalie?
What? Oh, Rosalie Placotti. Oh, Rosalie Placati, 55 Diamond Road Boulevard, thank you, so sorry.
You were drinking wine.
Wine, yeah, and, but we were watching this. And I have, as most of you know, I've worked in communities for about 30, 35 years now, addressed many boards, many mayors, many councils, I've been on a council. I gotta tell you, Ms. Mayor, I have never heard a mayor talk about their council people the way you did. I would guess that you would want to be a team. You know that's over now, right? And the only other thing I was gonna say, if there's any character in question here, it would be yours.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments?
Hi, George, how are you?
Fine, thank you. Good evening. My name is George E. Bright, and I live and own a house at 214 Superior Street. I'd like to speak about the problems facing South Haven in 2024 and possible ideas to help solve them. As you all know, South Haven's permanent resident population has changed in the last 30 years. According to the census, it's gone from 5,021 in year 2000 to 4,403 in 2010 to 3,999 in 2020. In addition to these declining numbers, the median age has risen from 47.7 in 2010 to 59.4 in 2021. Mind you, I have nothing against good-looking 74-year-olds like me, but I know it takes more than seniors to make a growing and thriving community. I believe the approach to reverse the negative facts has been to improve the economic factors in South Haven, a good long-term approach, but not the only one. I wish to offer a different point of view. This use centers on an effort to increase the number of young adults and young families making South Haven a permanent home. Part of our challenge is affordable homes to buy and year-round units to rent. Personally, I know what happens from when my 30-year-old son told me his future needed to be in a place away from South Haven. He had earned an engineering degree at Western Michigan University and had worked for five years at Whirlpool Corporation before deciding to leave South Haven and move to Winston-Salem, North Carolina. There he could rent a three-bedroom house for a lower price than a one-bedroom apartment in South Haven. To change the trend of these facts, the challenge for you, the leaders of South Haven, will be to think outside the box. Here are two ideas from outside that box. Take them or not. First, offer cash incentives or tax reductions similar to tax incentives for companies to young adults to help them reduce the debts of student loans. This offer will help young people raise their credit scores, which in turn can lower the cost of a mortgage. Second, offer grants or tax reductions to help young families pay for the down payment of a mortgage to buy a home. Include with these financial incentives a stipulation that recipients reside for a minimum number of years in South Haven. This could raise the number of permanent residents in a better way than the number of absentee landlords taking the profits from short-term rentals back to their homes in Chicago, Indianapolis, or Detroit. Absentee landlords may not get loans from local banks, may not buy autos from local car dealers, or send their children to our schools. They may not attend our service organizations or our churches. They probably do not exchange holiday gifts or even a hello and I hope you're doing well. Absentee landlords above all are absent, and despite promises of retiring here, that does not help South Haven in 2024, and it doesn't guarantee the houses will not be sold for huge profits before any retirement. Now, before people start fretting about how these ideas will raise their taxes, let's look at what could raise taxes. Today, South Haven has excellent school buildings, facilities, teachers, and students, but unless we attract young families whose children will give them a vested interest in the schools, we will have fewer children in those schools. The buildings and facilities will then cost more money per capita to maintain. These added costs will mean higher taxes. So please, think of solutions outside the box of other ideas, and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
Joe Wilkins, 811 Indiana Street. I just want to echo pretty much what the gentleman have stated before, before me. I say it often, especially at times like this, how important it is that this city, staff, council make a real human effort to try to bring in affordable housing. Kudos to the wellness center. I saw where they were allowing their facility to be used as a warming center. Temperatures are dropping, and with the wind, Gus, is below zero in a lot of places. And so, it might not affect a, a lot of people, but to me, my heart goes out to the increasing homeless rate that we have in South Haven, and it's not just with adults, but it's young people, kids, that I saw yesterday walking around with just jackets on. And I stopped them to see if they, you know, they were cold, and so, my heart goes out to that population of people and realizing that we're blessed. When we leave here, many of us are going home to a nice warm house, and sometimes we forget that there's a lot of, of young people as well as adults don't, don't have that blessing. And so I want to count, remind the council, we need affordable housing here in South Haven. My, my council, councilperson Wilkins, she, she teaches a class sometimes, and business class, and she was sharing with me how they went through this model and how kids will go through four years of education schooling, get their degree, and by the time they get their degree and land their first job.
Excuse me. Excuse me, we need to listen to the speaker. Go ahead.
Okay. By the time they get their jobs, their first job, land their first job, they, they yoke down to their college debts, and the houses are so far to reach, even when they, with a four-year degree, by the time they get their four-year degree and try to pay their college debt, they can't even afford a house. And so, it is a fact that most of the young peoples can't, can't even afford homes now when they come out of college, even with a good job. And so, it's very important because we see where there's a great need, and especially our, our homeless population is growing in South Haven, so I want to push this board to fight for affordable housing. Short-term rentals is, is a part of that, it's a, it's a piece of that project being done, you have to address short-term rentals as well. And so, I just wanted to make sure you all, to keep that in front, because sometimes, sometimes we, it's easy to be in your own little world and forget there's other people out there that's struggling. Thank you.
Oh, and, excuse me, I texted you about this, and I haven't heard back from you yet.
You texted me about that?
I'll text you again when I get home.
I'm sorry I didn't respond, but that is a very.
I look forward to meeting with you.
Thank you, look forward to meeting with you as well, thanks.
Any other questions, comments?
Rain Herbert, 404 North Shore Drive. I, like Rosalie, was enjoying a quiet night at home, enjoying making bread, like the old North Shore Drive person that I am, listening to the accolades for my friend and North Shore Drive person, Mary Hosley, my ward councilperson that I'm so proud of, listening to people sing the praises of her bringing our ward together. And no, nobody meant any, anything bad about you, George, but taking it so personally, who would, who would, who would take, who would take this so personally? What if you were some woman sitting on this council, like call the ambulance, all the social media and everything else? Come on, this isn't personal, this is democracy, this is the way it rolls, change comes, get over it, everybody, come on, this is, what, what? Get over it. Now, that being said, Mayor Brown, what in the world was that on your second appearance here? Shockingly, I mean, I watched, I watched residents of tremendous esteem, including Pat Gaston herself making an appearance here. The queen herself making an appearance here. And you saying those horrific things, having about your colleagues sitting on this, I don't know why, why your mayor pro tem isn't sitting next to you, again, with no disrespect to Jeff Arnold, and thank you for keeping Robert's Rules of Order going here today, I appreciate that. I don't know where staff is in terms of keeping that going. Staff is supposed to be of some counsel to the new, to the new mayor coming in to help her. A little research in the months since you've been elected would have been helpful to keep this, this meeting in order, and staff should be some help in helping you do that. There are motions, there are seconds, there are discussions, the discussion happens in the order of pro and con, and then there are votes on that. But for God's sake, don't insult your colleagues, don't call them cowards. Don't, don't do that. When you're trying to bring consensus to a city, what about us? You're hearing from us today, you're hearing from us in the vote, that was a disgrace. Redeem yourself, be better, be about us. Put the mayor pro tem where he's supposed to sit. Thank you, Councilman Hosley, for what you bring to the Planning Commission, and for heaven's sakes. George Sleeper, it's not about you. It's about better planning, new faces, better, change, not better, but change. For God's sake, let's go forward, let's make progress, let's do it together, and let's stop calling each other cow, cowards. I just want to go home and make bread. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Lisa Krupier, 561 Indiana. Since the, the agenda packet and the agenda I had that I downloaded from the end of the week last week did not have the STR snapshot report on it, so I did not realize that was going to be discussed at this meeting. But every time STRs come up, as has happened tonight, affordable housing comes up, and I said I was gonna do this, and way back when you were beginning to run for mayor, you said your first platform that you were running on was affordable housing, and you were going to revisit Overton, and I am here to say that I am holding you to that.
Absolutely.
When the Overton, Letitia Wilkins, and myself, Councilperson Wilkins, and Councilperson Reeser, the Ward One people were, we were all pulling for that Overton project until Councilperson Hosley brought up a couple things that were very, very telling and important, and I'm glad that it happened that way, but we still do not have affordable housing here, and we still need it very badly. And so I don't know what your plan is going forward, I know your initiatives changed during the period you were running for mayor, and, but I'll tell you what, every time this short-term rental issue comes up, it's slash affordable housing, because it cuts into the affordable, I don't know how you, I don't think that's able to be turned around, but we still sorely need affordable housing. And I am, it's like, I feel like we're back. When we were discussing this, and I would, Bishop Wilkins would get up here and speak so eloquently, and I was fortunate, he would calm me down, and I was able to get up and speak after him calmly, and I just had to dovetail on his message. This is a big issue here, and we just kind of go on, like, as long as we have a place to live and everything, it's, it's, it does not impact us, but there are many impacted by this, so I'm gonna keep saying it, affordable housing, where is it, and what are we gonna do? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? We are moving on to the city managers' comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Just very briefly, I very much want to thank Public Works, South Haven Police Department and Shays. As you, as we all know, there have been, we, we're under a weather event for the last couple days, and without the, the expedient work of Public Works and Police Department and Shays, we've all been sitting a little bit differently. I'm not sure if you all know all the different things that have been going on, but not, not just clearing other roads, but we've had, you know, obviously some, some lines down with the wind, and our crews are out there right away getting things put back up. Police Department, we've had a few crashes, they're out there, as well as with Shays, so shout out, big shout out, big kudos, a big thank you to all those different folks that make everything work so seamlessly. In addition to that, as you know, we are running the ice rink this year, I've heard some, some concern as to why it wasn't open this weekend. Well, when we have inclement weather, we're not gonna have it open. Typically, my rule is if it's 10 degrees or lower, so we're dealing with negative windchills or zero windchills, we're not gonna have that open. As much as kids like to be out and play, they may not always understand when their skin is exposed, they're gonna get hurt, so we kind of make a defining, a line in the sand, or snow, if you will, when, when that rink should be open. Lastly, I did want to thank Dana for his first meeting, giving his update, also thank you to Julie Piyok for her parliamentary training earlier today, and those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Arnold.
Kate, I saw Monday, Best, they mentioned a delay.
Yes, that was one thing I wrote down here, is that due to the weather, we did get some confirmation on Monday that Bestway was not able to come and pick up, so we have moved, they have asked to move their, their pickup schedule one day, so if you're supposed to be picked up on Monday, your pickup day will be Tuesday, if your pickup day is Tuesday, your pickup day will now be Wednesday, and Wednesday to be Thursday. They just weren't able to get out here, so there should be no letters in the mail from code enforcement. We understand that this is an unusual week, so if there are letters, please let me know, we'll get that cleaned up right away. Thank you.
Okay. Mayor and Councilperson's comments? I'll start with you.
First, I want to say thank you to everyone that came out on tonight with your different comments and your different concerns, and I also want to say again to George, thank you, to a job well done, working on, on planning. I also want to say welcome to our new Public Works Director, Dana Byrd. Welcome to South Haven. And it was something, before I came to city council tonight, I was watching a movie, of course, we didn't have school, and so, it was a Martin Luther King quote, and I also heard a, a. also heard someone say it tonight, and it said, "The time is always right to do the right thing." And it just stuck with me, and I was glad to hear someone else say that tonight. And tonight brought a lot of different thoughts, but one thing that stuck with me is something our previous first lady said some time ago, when she said, "When they go low, you go high." And I, I know who I am. I, I'm a, I'm a mother, I'm a pastor's wife, I'm a sister, I'm a friend, I'm a teacher, I'm a councilwoman. Never have I been called a coward. I am not a coward. I'm a woman of integrity, and I stand for what is right. And I always, always try to speak up for what Ward One wants and what they say. I value the community of which I've lived in for over 54 years. So, with that being said, I just want to say thank you to Ward One for entrusting me again to be your councilwoman. Those are my comments.
Thank you. George?
I also want to thank everyone that came today. I appreciate everyone's input. I want to talk a little bit about housing. I know a couple of you have mentioned affordable housing. I can tell you that's going to be one of the things I'm going to push for in priorities when we start to talk about priorities. Affordable housing can be kind of confusing because the definition of affordable housing is based on your income. And so, I always like to talk about the percentage of area median income, which is how a lot of housing is defined. You've got subsidized housing, which is in the lower end of the area median income. You've got workforce housing, which is kind of in the middle of that range, and then you have other types of housing. So, I really do think that housing development is a key to economic development, so I'm going to push for that when we start going on priorities. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Reeser?
I have nothing but respect for Letitia and the comments she made tonight. And dovetailing on that, I'm going to take the same position. I'm going to go high, and I'm not going to go low. I said my piece earlier. It's just so discouraging, because I wanted to see, and I dreamed was to have this council come together. So I'm going to change the subject, affordable housing. If you haven't seen it, I was out of town on business last week, but in the Sunday paper in Kalamazoo, there is a great article about affordable housing, and it's from the Michigan State Housing Development Authority. And it says, "A state is 190,000 homes short of what they need." And it says, quote, "The lack of supply is pushing up our costs and making housing increasing unaffordable." They did, and I'm not going to read all this, but they did, George, talk about what they call almost unaffordable homes, and it's when you spend more than 30%, I think you probably know this, 30% of your income on housing. The other thing they talked about, which I have never heard of before, even though the number of people in this state is decreasing, even though our supply is even decreasing on homes, the big issue they talked about is the fact that families are getting smaller, and therefore, we actually need more homes. And then they talked about vacation homes. There's eight states in the country that do more vacation homes, second homes, than all the other states combined. It's right here, and Michigan's one of them. And that pulls from the ability to have a supply of homes, which drives the prices up. If we keep taking homes out of the supply here and not build enough, our prices are going to go, because we're chasing a limited supply. Anyhow, I'm looking forward to getting into housing. I know it's important, Annie, I think it's important to George and several of us. I'm looking forward to it, and tackling short-term rentals, because you cannot separate the two. They're tied together. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hosley?
I echo the comments of Councilwoman Wilkins and Councilman Reeser, and thanking everyone for coming out today and also submitting comments by mail, email. I just wanted, and also thank Julie Piyok for the great training that we had earlier today. And also, I just wanted to bring to people's attention some things that I had read. So there is a community blood draw on this Thursday from 1:00 PM to 5:30 PM at 1635 76th Street in the downstairs foyer there. And I also want to thank everyone, the public service, who have helped dig us out and continue to dig us out. Every time you think the snow is going to stop, it restarts again. And in giving thanks, as I was looking back at the video from January 2nd, we gave a lot of thanks to our municipality-related groups for all the New Year's Eve, but I would like to just give an extra shout out to our Visitors Bureau. They're the ones who applied in August 7th, and we were commenting tonight, it's great when people apply early. They applied on August 7th for the New Year's Eve Fest, and they worked very hard to coordinate all the efforts. And so, a big shout out, Lori Krieger is the one who filed it. I know John had a, I'm sure John had a big effort in that, and everyone with the Visitors Bureau, so thank you for that. For affordable housing, yes, that, there are several things that can happen to help decrease price. Some of it is having duplexes, quadruplexes, and where that starts is with the zoning ordinance. So I look forward to looking for ways to make options available, as we hear that the families are getting smaller, so we don't need these large seven-bedroom, six-bath Trying to provide more options for families, trying to find more apartment buildings and things like that, where the, the price point is set so that it is 30% of their income and does make it available. And with tonight's consent agenda, I was given support, and thank you for that, to apply for the land bank, the Van Buren County Land Bank Authority. Unfortunately, I found out that the position was just filled, but I will still apply. That provides a lot of opportunities for development. They're in their third round of blight reduction, and I know Griffin helped someone in our area with, I think, the first round of blight reduction. And it's just ways to benefit from state money to help our local community to move us forward in a positive direction. And I just wish everyone to stay safe. One other PSA I read, if you have a fire hydrant near you, please dig it out or contact, I'm guessing, city if they're aware of one, so that hopefully you'll never, will never have to use it, but if Shays does need to respond, at least they won't have to spend time digging out the fire hydrant. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. O'Nooki?
It's funny, I also had affordable housing jotted down on my comments, so apparently we're all touching on it tonight. But I think, I'm excited to know that this is a priority for so many of us, and hopefully this coming year, we can get a lot done. Mr. Ebride, I know you brought up the incentives, and I did read something about that. Holland was doing something similar to that. I think I shared that with some or all of the council. So I love finding these new ideas, things that we can do to bring more people here to our town and get a better balance, which I think everyone on council wants to have here. And I believe, well, I know we talked a little bit about lifeguards at the last meeting, and I just would really like for us to really discuss that as a council and see if that's something that we could have for this coming year. I do understand now, after the last meeting, that we're running out of time if we want that to happen. So, I don't know what our next step is, but I just, I feel like that's an important thing to address. And I just wanted to welcome Dana here, and thank George for his service. Thank everyone for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Your next? Ms. Hosley, could, the blood draw, you gave the address, do you, what was that, what is that? Is that a church? Is that a, that might help some people?
Yeah, so it didn't have...
Okay, could you give the address one more time then? Please.
1635 76th Street, South Haven, so the south end, in the township, south of Monroe. Monroe turns into 76th.
Hope Creek?
It's got, yeah.
Excellent, good. And I just, I saw over the news that there's a big blood shortage, so if anyone can get there, please do. Yeah, anytime with the, the short-term rental snapshot report, anytime short-term rentals, affordable housing, they're, they're intertwined, and affordable housing is definitely one of the top of my list, too. Somebody said I didn't make any Rogers Rules mistakes. Nope, I made two bad mistakes, but we overcame it. Thanks to everyone that came and commented, and lots of times up here and out there, when we're making comments, we speak passionately, and it's just because we all love this place. And so, I always try to remember, it all comes from the fact that we love this city, and so, we try to be thick-skinned and water up the duck's back and those kinds of things. Those are my comments.
Thank you. I want to welcome Commissioner Hosley to Planning Commission, and thank you, George, for your service. And I know that you'll still be working hard and offering your highly-trained wisdom from the city council, so thank you for everything. Thank you for everyone who spoke up, thank you for people who signed the petition, emailed me, called me. So I heard your voices loud and clear. Just a reminder, our, some of our postal workers are having a tough time getting to mailboxes because sidewalks and the walk between sidewalks and homes are not shoveled. So if you can, if you own a short-term rental, please monitor that and make sure that the walks are safe, so the postal workers can make it safely to deliver your mail. And thank you to Dana and your crew for working through this abominable snowstorm. We appreciate all your hard work. And those are my comments. If there's no other business, we're adjourned. Thank you.